Let's call this meeting to order. And Angie, call the roll when you're ready.
I'll take one as well.
Commissioner Bailey. Commissioner Bunting.
She may be zooming in, but I don't know how that's gonna work. She's in a car, I understand.
Commissioner Lumberman.
Here.
Commissioner Murphy.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Alrighty, John, will you give us a prayer tonight?
Heavenly Father, we ask you to bless this meeting that we would give our full consideration to the topics before us and that we would make decisions in the best interests of the taxpayers of Gresham County. In Christ's name, amen.
Amen. Stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all, born and unborn. Okay, anyone have any changes to the agenda?
Can we move Chris, number four, down to number seven? So, because we might have people that need to speak before.
So that's under M.
Yes.
We're moving four to seven. And moving everybody up.
Yes.
And we may, nine-one-one is, I imagine, pretty busy, so we might have to move them around.
Take them as they go.
Yep. Entertain a motion to approve the agenda. No one has anything else?
Motion.
Motion by Bailey, second. Second by Lumberman. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Pass. Brief public comment. Anyone here like to make a comment?
I can make a quick comment.
Yep, sure. Why don't you come forward, identify yourself?
Do that. Right over here?
Wherever. That's probably good.
Well, this is a quick, I don't really have a substantive update. My name is Fred Short. I work with energy. I spoke to some of you over the past couple weeks and looking to connect with the rest shortly. You know, we're working on a wind energy project in Gresham County. We're looking to build seventy-two wind turbines, primarily Newark and New Haven, with some turbine locations in Fulton, Washington, and North Shade as well. We are still finalizing land, working with the last couple landowners, but getting ready to submit some special land use permits over the next few weeks. So just want to make myself available to all of you and hand out my information if you have any additional questions or would like to discuss anything further, but just want to make sure it's on everyone's radar that we'll be looking to submit a special land use permit in the next few weeks.
Would you like to go to the county or the townships first?
Which township are we looking at first?
I mean, would the permit, the land use permit go to the townships first?
So, as of right now, we are looking to start with New Haven. That is where we finalized land first and have turbine location settled. So, it's not all boiled out completely yet, but I think it would be New Haven and then the county and the other townships, just as planned and site plans and all that was finalized.
Thank you.
Alrighty, thank you. Anyone else? Anyone online?
Dan's here, no?
Oh, good. We have Dan. We figured you were swamped. Okay. So we need to open a public hearing for the nine-one-one service. I need a motion there.
Motion.
Motion by Smith, second by Bailey. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. We're in the public hearing. Dan, are you running things on this?
I don't know if I necessarily need to really run anything on this. If the board has any questions on the nine-one-one plan and proposed changes or updates to it that were presented one of the last times that I was in front of all of y'all. But, yeah, and you'll have to forgive me, my mind, I literally, just two minutes ago, stepped out of the nine-one-one center after all this weather stuff, so my head's somewhere else right now.
Understand that. Any, any questions on the plan for Dan?
Yeah, I tried to, I tried to compare it, you know, with what there was from, I think it was ninety-one or something like that. I mean, it was, that was more resolutions and things like that. Is there any changes in this from there? I mean, as far as, I'm sure technology has changed, different things have changed. I guess I would have, maybe I would have liked to see it, like where you struck something out and said, this is a change, like in the bill, you know, or... Is there any changes in here? I couldn't, I went through, tried to compare one to the other to see what changes were there.
Well, and that's exactly it, Sam. This was a major overhaul because the last plan that I believe was,
I think it was like ninety-one or something.
Like two thousand and four or something like that. And basically, all that had us is E-nine-one-one compliant and it didn't even have it acknowledging the fact of the creation of the nine-one-one authority. So, this is a major overhaul of the plan. It acknowledges, like you, a lot what you talked about, the technology. It acknowledges our readiness and preparation and movement towards NextGen nine-one-one or NG-nine-one-one and, and things like that. That's, that's the heavy lift in the plan.
One question I had, Dan, you know, with the events of the last month, has there been any planning for an EMT and electromagnetic pulse? How that would affect us?
Nothing to my knowledge.
We'd be back to horse and buggy, so.
Right. Yeah, there's, there's nothing like that, to my knowledge, and that would be Mike Soltes under the...
That'd be Mike's, okay. Yeah. All right. I'll check with Mike on that.
Thank you.
Well, and I understand Sam's point. Right at the beginning, it says November fifth, nineteen ninety-one.
Yeah.
And so what is...
He has the old plan in here. I printed it off the other day.
Right.
Just kind of sat there and looked at it, and I...
So...
It's like when they write a bill in the House or the Senate, they'll strike out, you know, and say, this is a change from...
Exactly, exactly. And that would have been nice to have those changes called out.
I just, just, it's a, it's a long spread from ninety-one to ninety.
You know, it is what it is. I don't think it's gonna affect anything in the long run. Just a, it's, it's a public document that I'm sure the state of Michigan has to put on a file.
That's, yep, in a nutshell, it is a required document. When I took over as interim director in two thousand and eighteen and the then sheriff, Doug, had the state nine-one-one committee come in and do an audit, that was one of their findings at the time, is that our existing nine-one-one plan was severely out of date. And they basically made that a mission for the nine-one-one authority to update the plan. When I submitted the information and everything and had a few discussions with Cole Stoker Toski for the update to the plan, that was basically their suggestion, is it's, it's a rewrite. It's really not a, it's not just a simple couple strikes out and update the plan with all the changes that have happened to the state legislation, changes that have happened with technology. You know, not to mention, probably the least of the things is just the acknowledgement of the actual creation of the authority, you know, and how the authority works.
Is this a boilerplate plan from someplace? I mean...
I know that Cole Stoker Toski have done a lot of other plans for other agencies.
So most of this comes from there?
I would su, I would assume it's relatively boilerplate.
Okay.
The, the big things that are going to be different is how each dispatch or public safety answering point is governed. You know, your central dispatcher in Gresham County is under an authority, which is kind of an advisory kind of an authority, as it's written out there in the plan. Although they do have, you know, financial and other governing powers. But then there's other public safety answering points that are directly under a sheriff's office. And then there's other places that have multiple public safety answering points within a physical boundary of a county, which, and the plan kind of alludes to that of this, you know, if this, then that, those kind of things. So like if, you know, if the city of Alma wanted to pull out of the agreement and create their own public safety answering point, they could do that. And that's, and that's how it's explained in that plan, is the things that they would have to do and things like that.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions on the board? Any public comment from the public? Here or anyone online? Matt, do you see any possibilities?
Nope, I'm not seeing anybody right now.
Okay. Then, looking for a motion to adjourn the public hearing?
Motion.
Motion by Bailey, second.
Second.
Second by Lumberman. Any further discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion passed. We're back on the, out of the public hearing. We're looking for a resolution to adopt the plan.
I'm making a motion that we adopt the Gresham County nine-one-one service plan updated twenty-one, twenty-one.
Motion by Commissioner Smith. We have a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lumberman. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion passed.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. You can go back to the zoo. Good luck.
Thank you.
All right, we have the consent calendar. Anyone want to pull anything up for discussion?
What was the consent calendar?
Motion by Commissioner Bailey. We have a second.
For?
Support by Commissioner Smith to approve the consent calendar. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. No, we're no. On to Tracy, you're up.
Everybody. I'm gonna emphasize building and facility issues tonight. First, there are a variety of projects going on around the courthouse, some planned and some unplanned. First, the rubber roofing project is underway. This is one we planned for. You folks approve the vendor and so forth. So they've been out working on the roof, doing some cleaning, doing some prep today. This would explain, I think, the severe thunderstorms that we had and the possibility of hail because we might as well have that kind of weather when we need to be working on the roof. I don't know how much that will delay things, if at all, but the project overall is expected to take about two weeks. Just thrilled to be able to get this underway before the end of this fiscal year. This is the last of the major projects on our capital improvements list for this fiscal year. Then, in the unplanned project category, we're having some leaking of the cast iron pipes in the basement. Yes, those would be sewer pipes. Some of the district court files have been affected. Tony had three contractors here down in that area last week to look at what we might need. One has provided a quote. I asked Ryan to contact the other two contractors today to find out if they plan to give us a number. So, that work obviously needs to be done without delays. We're trying to get everything in place. The leaking also highlights the way that storage has been done in the basement. We have paper court files and other departments, paper files and records that, you know, under the best of circumstances is unlikely to hold up well in a damp basement environment. So I strongly suggested to court folks, and I'll be passing word along to department heads as well, that folks really need to be acquiring plastic bins and storing materials in those bins. That'll keep them safe from the ever-present dampness, but also that these kinds of incidents. So also because of the dampness, there is some concern that we might have a mold problem down there. Some mold is certainly likely, it's a basement after all, but we're gonna do some testing of the air quality in the office spaces just above that area to ensure that the environment is safe. So, all of that is in play. And finally, by way of reminder, we still plan to have the auction of county property on Friday, September twenty-fourth. We have John Pavlik, auctioneers, realtors, doing that for us, and they're doing it without charge. We've mentioned that at the last meeting. All kinds of stuff. We've got chairs, chairs and more chairs, some IT equipment, other furniture, kitchen and office equipment, a Kubota tractor, a truck tools, John Deere mower, all kinds of things. We do have flyers that look like this. There are a few available at the entryway of our office, and I'm sure that Kailin is getting these things distributed more widely. And it is Kailin Lombard that is making this happen. She's leading the team and the project, and she's uber organized, and we just couldn't have a better person on staff for undertaking such a large thing. You know, this hasn't been done, and I don't know, no one seems to know how long. So we've got quite a lot of things that have piled up, so looking forward to that. I hope you're able to stop by. That's gonna be down at the, the barn down the road here, and that's all I have for now.
Ready? Anyone have any questions for Tracy? Thank you. Commissioners' reports. John?
My only report is we have a airport committee meeting Thursday, and this is gonna be the first meeting in about three months. And I think it's, we're just trying to rebuild momentum and get moving again, probably plan for the departure of Matt Schooley. I, I'm just glad we're, we're doing something again. But, so anyways, we got that Thursday. That's, it's really the only thing I've got to report.
Thank you. George?
I have no report.
And I don't really have anything either, all right? Let's move on. Reclassification in the treasurer's office. Terry?
Yes. I have submitted a reclassification request to the board. Updated position descriptions were submitted to HR where they were scored. I've submitted that as well. Those scoring, the scoring tool that we use warranted new requests that I have submitted. So we've made a lot of changes, and there were quite a few updates to the position descriptions that were submitted.
Looking through this, you want to move the deputy to full-time?
Yes. There are, she is doing the P R E, which is the principal residential exemption, and they, there's a lot of work with that. That's done at the township level, but then sent us to the state when it comes back, whatever decisions they make, their, the distributions. And it's also with the board of reviews. Those are attached to that. It has to be done. There's, there's a lot of work that goes along with that, and right now she's part-time and doesn't really have enough time to get it all done.
So how many people do you have in your office, full-time, part-time?
I have two part-time and two full-time.
Two?
No. Myself, my chief, and two part-times.
I thought, didn't we do a study on this? I mean, did, did, did your hours change from when we did a study from the last treasurer?
No.
People change?
People change, but not ours.
But we still, I mean, I can't remember when we had that.
About the same amount of people. Yeah, treasurer, a full-time deputy, and two part-time deputies.
We paid for like a study in that office or something?
Yeah, we, we, we did a ProNexus study up there, an audit, that proved that with that, that many people, they could do the job. With this plan? No, no, without that. So what's changed? There's more work?
The work, yes. We've made changes, and the work is being done in a different way.
Man, we seem to be getting these changes in grade. Maybe we do need to do some kind of study to, they keep coming to us on this.
After our, you know, first of October, I, I, I...
Yes, I don't disagree with it all, Mr. Chairman. Terry, when did you want to make this change effective? What date?
October first.
October first for the new year?
And essentially, we're just moving one part-time to a full-time?
Yes, and then the grade, their grades have changed.
Just the one or all?
No, all of them. I updated all the position descriptions and submitted those for grading to HR, and they all came back at a higher grade.
The role of HR, of course, is once we receive position descriptions, we do have the scoring tool that you're, you're quite aware of. We did not have a role in writing the position descriptions. Sometimes we're asked to do that, sometimes not, but we just scored what we were given.
Any further questions? What's your pleasure, gentlemen?
I'm feeling like we wouldn't want to table this for the time being.
Well, table it, you can table it, that's of course, but if the board chooses to take no action, that's simply tabling it, if you would. But tabling means that you gotta bring it back up again. And I'm, and I'm, I'm, I, I have no desire to bring it back up right away. To me, it's either an up or down.
So it sounds like we either need a motion or I don't hear a motion.
There'd be public comment, yeah.
You're, you're the chairman, so.
I'd be willing to accept public comment.
From here?
Yeah.
Okay. I could write this. My name is Trisha Mobenberg. I worked at the clerk's office for the last three years. Previously to that, I worked in the treasurer's office for three years. I'm just voicing my opinion that I feel no step increase, no extra money should be awarded to the treasurer's office. I don't believe it's necessary to have a P R E or Principal Residence Exemption Manager. In auditing homestead stands for property taxes. A pronoun shows property owners have a different mailing address than their property address. Property owners hopefully that respond to letters with them, there are probably differences in addresses. If they're receiving a hundred percent P R E or exemption, and shouldn't be, a calculation is made and then invoiced into the property owner, going back three years. That's one of the responsibilities of the treasurer's office. It would be similar to me being the C P L manager, or restitution manager, or jury manager. That's just part of my job. Also, I would employ the entitlement to a level increase or grade increase in higher pay for a job they may not know how to do or be qualified to do. I also worked part-time in the treasurer's office. I began at three days a week. I was allowed over four days per week, or thirty-two hours by our previous administrator, but then it was retracted, but it was realized that I would gain time to insurance. So I was allowed twenty-nine hours. The other deputy treasurer at that time was allowed to work thirty-two hours per week, and she did not take any insurance. I believe two part-time deputies worked fine for the amount of work to be done. And yes, we too dealt with title searches, forfeiture, foreclosure, et cetera. That was our job. And you are correct, or maybe you even brought it up, as there was an audit done a couple years ago. And other part-time, it just wasn't warranted. And as far as putting the board review process with the person that's doing the principal residence exemption, I don't think they should be put together because you still need those checks and balances. So that's my opinion.
Okay, thank you. Now, currently, you're in the clerk's department.
Yes.
Well, I just went through one of these P R E things with my daughter, a land contract, and just some crazy stuff. And I really dealt with the township lady, you know, and I think I dealt with the state of Michigan. And, and then they had a hearing or something on it. I, I elected just to pay the money and be done with them. And I just got a call from the state that said, hey, you won, and we're gonna pay you back. So, but I, I don't remember dealing with the treasurer's office.
We are the ones that actually pay you back, and then we, we spend...
The lady who told me I get a check back from the state, I paid the state of Michigan. I wrote a check to the state of Michigan for two or three years for some property that my daughter... I think we screwed up on land contract on recording it, or something happened. I don't know what it was. But I never lived there. I never took the exemption. Hannah took the exemption. It was just kind of a thing that she was paying me on a contract type of thing. It was recorded, but I don't know, we didn't do the memorandum right or something. We didn't do right, but and the state just contacted me a week ago.
Okay, I'm not aware of that one, so.
A week ago and said they'd be writing a check to the guy. I just kind of laughed. He said, I'm with the state of Michigan. Turned over the revenue department. I thought, oh, geez. And he said, the, the guy, good news, I would cut you a check for three years or whatever we paid. And he said, I can't tell you when it would come, but it'll send it to you. But I, I don't remember, you know, doing anything with that with the treasurer's office. The lady at the township.
Okay, well, we...
From the state, and then I got a man, called me back, said he'd cut me a check, so.
We do handle the delinquent part of it, if they're delinquent.
We were a delinquent. We were...
Right, that's why I haven't...
They think I, I...
Homestead.
Homestead property, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, yeah. That, I mean, the lady at the township, then I know you didn't live there, and then I submitted some forms to her, and then she submitted to somebody.
Right.
So just turned it down. So I can't see.
Okay, so unless I'm hearing a motion, I believe we're gonna move on. Okie-doke. Thank you, Terry. Matt, you're up next. You have a couple things, I believe?
I do. Yep. So first off, let's see. I wanted to discuss the virtual server upgrade. This was approved by the board for next fiscal year's capital improvement schedule using A R P funds. And there's kind of two pieces to this. One is, I was going to ask the board to move this up in the schedule to this fiscal year so that we can wrap this work up for the fiscal year. going to ask the board to move this up in the schedule to this fiscal year so that we can wrap this work up for the fiscal year ends. And then the second portion of this is, I got the, the three quotes that's required by our purchasing policy and I was going to use a similar methodology as to what I've done in the past. There's a hardware component to this project. There's also a software component. And then there's I T labor component as well. And what I'd like to do is purchase the hardware from the lowest bidder and then for the, the I T labor component, use I T right as they're most familiar with the way our systems are set up and have done some work with this virtual server before in the past. Um, some of the reasons we want to get this upgraded now rather than later, as it is actually causing some reliability issues currently. And I've also been notified by a couple of departments that they intend to convert paper documents to digital documents, which is going to take up storage as well. So we, we want to get this taken care of as soon as possible so that they can begin that work. And if you, if you all have any specific questions about it, I'm welcome to, or I'm ready to answer them.
Man, is this the server you're gonna have here?
Yeah, this is a physical, yep, the server actually is already here at the building. Um, we did, we did the migration work initially last year. What this project is doing is it's expanding the storage available on the server so that we can store more files on it. And it's also going to allow us to migrate one or two of our last virtual servers off of old hardware and onto this new hardware. So we're just purchasing storage to add to a server that we already have.
But we approved this for the last or for next year's budget, right?
Yeah, you, I think what the board had done was basically earmarked the A R P funds for this project for next fiscal year.
How does, can Chris move that to do it this year?
Yeah, Chris did say that with your guys' approval, he would be able to move that to this year.
Much difference there?
And you're recommending the low bid here, it looks like.
Yeah, I was recommending the low hardware bid, but I was also recommending that we use I T right for the, the labor, for the actual work for it. So you, do you have a total figure?
Forty seven eighty one twenty eight. That's the server.
Not right in front of me, but let me add these three numbers up and then come up with it.
I was gonna say, there's a few numbers to add.
I'm looking at forty seven eighty one twenty eight, ten thousand, uh, seven sixty fifty three. And.
Yeah, I'm, I'm missing one piece of the puzzle and it's the Windows Server licensing. It was on I T rights quote and I don't have that sitting in front of me right now, but let me pull that up.
I have a copy from I T right. It totals ten thousand seven, seven hundred and sixty dollars and fifty three cents.
That's a total?
Yeah, but that's, I think that combines the labor portion of it as well as the.
Okay, they bid on the, so they back out the sixty nine sixty six from that number.
Yeah, that sounds correct. Yeah, if you took I T rates amount and then subtracted the sixty nine sixty six.
Yep.
And then you, then you added back in the four thousand seven hundred eighty one twenty eight, then you would come up with the appropriate number.
What's the bottom line?
Yeah, I know, that's, that's what I'm trying to, I'm trying to qualify your rights quote, so I can, if you guys.
Okay, who's got a calculator? We need ten thousand, seven sixty fifty three, subtract sixty nine sixty six, if there isn't any change. And then. Sixty nine sixty six out of the I T bid. And then add back in the server at forty seven eighty one twenty eight.
Hey buddy, man, I, I just think that we've already approved it.
Yeah.
And we're just gonna move.
Just moving money.
And I T right, Matt, is what you're saying with I T right, they weren't the lowest bid on that, but these are the people that are mirroring. We went down once and I remember they had a, they just picked us up and we run on their stuff for a while or whatever.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're the people, they're, they're our contract people.
Guys, yeah.
I, yeah, I T right basically performs all of our I T managed services.
Yeah, it's crazy to switch.
Yeah, you wanna switch for this.
Right, but we are gonna switch for the server itself.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the physics, the hardware, the, the drives that we're going to install to the server, we're gonna purchase that from a different vendor because I T rights parts are usually marked up, so.
You made a good point. You made a good point, Sam. We've already approved it. All we got, really our motion.
Money to go.
Yeah, our motion just has to stipulate that whatever we approved before, we just allow you to move it to this fiscal year.
Like Chris figured it out.
Yeah, all right. I'll make a motion to that.
Okay, we have a motion from Bailey, second.
Second.
Second from Lemonman. Angie, do you have all that? All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay, motion passed. And Matt, you have one other thing here?
Yep, I do. So the second topic that I wanted to discuss tonight was the Windtel service agreement renewal. And what Windtel does for us is they provide us with multiple services. They provide us, they're our internet service provider. They're our telephone provider. They also host our email currently and they're our efax provider. And what I'd like to do, I explained this in the memo, but I would like to, I recommend that we move ahead with a two-year commitment with them. It's a decent balance of the, the pricing. We do get a discount signing with a two-year commitment, but it also doesn't commit us to too long of a length of time like a five-year commitment would. There's a, a lot that can change in five years and we do also plan on taking a hard look at our phone system and plan on making some improvements to that. So I, I hate to commit us to five years knowing that we've got this project coming up and knowing that we'll also want other telephone providers to take a look at that and come up with, submit proposals for it. And then one other note I wanted to make is, it is a, a pretty decent increase in pricing from what we're currently paying. It's basically over, over a year, it's about a twenty thousand dollar increase. And it's kind of a long story that goes behind that, but basically Windtel wasn't, back when we renewed our service agreement, uh, three years ago, Windtel audited our account after we renewed that service agreement. And they noticed that we were doing business with them that wasn't on the books anywhere necessarily. So what they did is they audited our account and found that we were utilizing these services, but we weren't paying for them. So rather than make us start paying for them right away, they honored the agreement that we had just signed with them and allowed us to, you know, stick to that agreement. They significantly discounted our bill to reflect the pricing of the agreement and they added those services to our bills so that they would be on the books officially and that we would see them on our bills. So that's, that's kind of the five or the two-minute explanation as to why the, the service cost is increasing with this proposed renewal. I did reach out to them and if you notice on that table in the memo, there's a two-year commitment and then that two-year commitment negotiated pricing. What I did is I asked them to basically, uh, allow us to sign only a two-year contract with the three-year discounted pricing. So we would basically only have to commit for two years to get the three-year pricing.
That sounds like good work, man.
Thanks.
This would be under next year's budget?
Yeah, I, yes, it would be, yeah.
How much would we go with Windtel?
Motion by Commissioner Smith, second. Second by Commissioner Bailey. Any discussion?
Now, Matt, I want to ask you, we're gonna upgrade the email system, correct?
Yeah, we do have a capital improvement plans or project scheduled this upcoming fiscal year to take a look at the email system and.
And that we work directly with our, 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 our provider on that or not?
We would be working with I T right or we, based on the pricing of it, we may put that up for a better proposal again, just to make sure that everybody's offering.
So it wouldn't be, it wouldn't necessarily be Windtel that would be carrying that or how's that work?
It, I don't think that Windtel would be able to bid on that because they, they don't offer a solution that would
Okay.
Be what I plan on writing the R F P to, to be.
Okay, I was wondering what was happening there because our, you know, everybody knows our email system isn't the best right now.
Yeah.
So we, we, I know you planned on improvement. I would just wondered how that dovetailed into anything that went, that were, Windtel is providing to us currently.
Yep, we're allowed to decrease, we're allowed to cancel services under this agreement, a certain amount of services without losing the, the discounted pricing. So if we decided to move to a different email provider, that wouldn't impact this. I mean, we would, we wouldn't be paying Windtel for that, those services, but it wouldn't cause us to not get the discounts anymore, if that makes sense. Yeah, okay. Very good.
Any other questions? Then we're moving to approve the two-year negotiated agreement. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay, motion passed.
Thank you.
Sounds like we got another line coming in. All right, Chris, it looks like, you know, we're moving, we're sliding Chris down. So. The Grass County winner.
No, no, it's Keegan now.
Keegan, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I got you, Millie.
Yep.
All right, hope everybody's doing good. Uh, tonight I've got the Winter L forty nine for approval. And actually, before that, I have two new staff members in the equalization office that I'd like to introduce. So the first new staff member is Sandra Brewbaker. Sandy stepped into the role of equalization clerk. This position includes deed entry, data entry, maintaining, updating the county database, assisting with various reports and assisting with taxpayers. And Sandy's doing excellent. She's a very fast learner. She's really picking up this position quickly. Um, she's got excellent customer service. She's a very hard worker and we're very happy to have Sandy on our team. The other position that was filled is the equalization appraiser and this is Jamie Gutierrez. Uh, Jamie stepped into the role of equalization appraiser, which includes fieldwork, data collection, parcel valuation, preparing studies, assisting reporting and assisting taxpayers. And Jamie's also a Michigan certified assessing officer. Jamie's doing excellent in this position. Uh, she's a very hard worker and with Jamie's help, we are actually completing all of our studies in-house this year, which has been a goal of mine ever since I started the position, so very happy with that. And just like Sandy, Jamie's, we're extremely lucky to have Jamie on our team. All right.
Welcome aboard, everybody.
I believe they're both on this meeting. If anybody has any questions. So.
No.
All right, perfect. Yeah, I'm very happy with our team in the equalization office. So moving on, I've got the Winter L forty twenty nine. Uh, so these are the tax rate requests for millages to be levied on December 1st. This is a little different from the summer millages. These are the voted millages instead of the operating millage. Uh, and then you can see from the form that we do not have any sort of reduction fraction this year and there were no expired millages from last year, so there is no change from last year's form to this year's form.
Any questions for Keegan? I believe we're looking for a motion to approve.
Uh, yes, please.
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Bailey, second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lemonman, any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay. Motion passed. Thank you, everyone.
All right, thank you.
All right, now, we're moving on to the MSU extension. Bill, I believe you're up.
Hi, everyone. This, this is the annual, excuse me, the annual agreement between extension and the county. Uh, you should have it in front of you. If, if you need me to, I can also share my screen, but just let me know. It is essentially the same with the exception of the changes in the numbers, which I'll point out. There is a new paragraph. It's the sixth paragraph down. Uh, it's a longer paragraph. That's a, uh, that was inserted in all agreements. It's a D E I, um, paragraph. So you can take a second to focus in on that because that's new to the agreement.
What page is that on, Bill?
First page, paragraph six. One of the whereas. Paragraphs. And I should say, anyone new to this or forgotten, um, obviously the funding for extensions pass through the millage, um, and that's what we're on and however, those dollars come into the county and then we include budget requests as that, as the source of funding every year, which that's a separate matter. However, the major component of the consultants or call them consultants in the line item, but the extension services are laid out in this agreement. So that's on page two, but I'm just gonna give you a second. Any questions on that first page? So if we go on to, to page two, the only thing new besides, uh, and it lays out what MSU extension will provide and then it get down to the second section B that says county will provide. So the county is providing that by using the, the, the funds. So they're providing a base assessment, so that would come out of those funds. This would also be in the budget itself, but a base assessment of fifty one thousand nine hundred and eighty-three, that's a slight increase. Uh, I believe about two percent increase over last year. Uh, and then additional funding for, uh, the four H P C or the P C coordination. Uh, and so in the base assessment, there's a point five of that program coordination. The additional point five is that additional amount of thirty three thousand three hundred and thirty-seven. So the total for that line item in the budget, which is, like I said, that'll be on a separate issue, is eighty five thousand three hundred and twenty. Then, as part of the millage funds, it supports one and a half F T E of clerical staff, uh, office and meeting spaces, uh, and office operations. That is taken, uh, care of with the office that we have and we entered into a lease. I know you all remember this. I think it was just last year that we renewed that lease for the building in Elma. So that's there. The utilities are paid through these funds. Uh, the clerical staff are actually at this time, county employees. If we change any one of those out or there's one full time and one half time, then they, we would replace them with MSU employees, but paid through the same funds. It would just change that assessment amount up top, but right now it's county employees. Uh, and then also in the budget, there's indirect costs that are charged for payroll and everything else that are within the budget to handle some of those, um, those matters. Uh, let's see, that's, that's it for page two. As far as any changes, any questions on that? And then if we go to page three, just a continuation of those agreements, the internet service. Obviously, we've got internet service out at that building. Uh, we've got a conference room. It's A D A compliant. We do provide cleaning or the, the funds do within the budget. And then there's that paragraph three that talks about MSU office, um, support staff, clerical support staff. Then just the terms as far as the payment, term and termination, which are all. Then, just the terms as far as the payment, term and termination, which are all the same. Uh, independent contractor in the general terms, force majeure, assignment. Uh, page four, continuing on. Standard language that's been in, in the agreement. If they have any questions about any of it, certainly let me know, but that's, that's all stayed the same. Um, if we go to the last, the appendix, just want to point out that and this is all language, Matt could probably tell us what it all means, but talking about the technical standards for the internet connections, and that's all adequate, and we're, we're doing well. So that's essentially the agreement, so my ask is, as every year, is that uh, that's, that's the governance of how we operate using those millage funds, and want to run everything through uh, the Board of Commissioners. Anything that's, other expenses, we've included in that budget. For instance, just an example, just in case we do do some changes to restructure the front of that office, I've put a, a budget line item in there, so we take care of that in the acceptance of the budget. Any questions?
So Bill, you're good with everything in this agreement? It sounds like to me that you might want to move some employees from this building into your office?
No, no, we, everyone is contained in the office in Elma.
Okay.
But what we might want to do, because right now I've got, I've got those two staff in the front not working at the same time, because the, they're the support staff, because they're so close, closely situated to one another. So I'm, I'm looking for a way to put some division between them, just for safety with the pandemic.
Alright.
Any further questions?
Make a motion, we entered in agreement.
Uh, motion by Commissioner Smith, we need a second, second by Commissioner Bailey, any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye opposed, nay? Motion passed. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
So next up, we have a request for AP, ARP funds from Breckenridge Wheeler Township. Is there anyone online to speak to this? Tracy, I know you, you sent out the letter.
No, I didn't send, well, you all received a copy of the letter that was mailed directly to you, I took the step of putting a, a copy of the letter on the agenda for your discussion. Uh, this is from the, uh, the Breckenridge Wheeler Township Fire and Rescue Department, they're looking for ARP funds for a fire hall expansion project. Uh, this is in response to the letter that I sent out all over the the county to township supervisors and others, looking for ideas for collaboration with our ARP funds and theirs. The, their response that I sent to them, as you can see, was just asking if they had touched base with Breckenridge, or Wheeler Township, or anyone else, what sort of collaboration they, they had pursued. And then also asking, as we do, everyone who's looking for these funds, asking them for some input about where, in the, in the, the act that they believe that this uh, this expenditure of funds would comply with the, with what is contemplated for use of ARP funds. I've not heard back from them, I don't know if any of you have had a discussion, but that's the preamble and leads up to your discussion.
Has Chris been approached to see if they qualify for this, the ARP funds?
Well, what, what we've been doing, and the answer is no, because what we have been doing is, we have not wanted to do all of the research and assume all of the responsibility for making these determinations, so we do ask that those who bring forward um, these requests, that they at least take a stab at how they think they qualify. Um, now, some folks just need more handholding through that than others, and we're willing to do that, but we are assigning them the responsibility for that.
I'll just go ahead and accept the letter for now, and.
Yeah, it, it, it sounds like we need some more information from them as to how much they're really looking at, obviously, we aren't going to fund the one point five million.
How, how do they qualify?
Yeah, and qualify.
More likely. So I can't say or say we wouldn't do it, I just can't.
Yeah.
What are we gonna do?
Right.
How are you gonna fit it in?
Yeah.
That's the question currently.
He questions, you know.
Yeah.
Alright, then.
I have just one other question on this, is it, did Breckenridge, the village, not get any ARP?
Villages don't get money.
But Wheeler Township?
The township.
Township got about eighty-nine thousand, I think.
Okay.
My question is, you're saying you want more information, but what, what action are you asking of me? What instructions are you giving me?
Sounds like you've already done it.
Yeah, you're doing it, you're asking them, how do they think it fits, and that's, I think that's, we're all asking the same question.
Okay.
Response.
So I'll, I'll follow, I'll follow up indicating that you folks discussed it, and indeed that you are interested in the information that I previously requested.
Yeah, and I think we're looking at what the other townships and cities and the fire department are putting in, and what they're asking for. Alright, without objection, we received the letter, and discussed it.
Back to Chris.
Okay, I believe we're up to, Chris, Chris, you ready with the budget?
Absolutely, I've been ready.
Well, they told us to hold off, so I don't know.
No, I, I prefer that everybody else gets to, gets to go home a little bit earlier, so.
Alrighty.
Thank you for that.
Did you cause that last explosion?
No. It's unsettling for me, I just put up some rafters yesterday, so I want to go.
Oh dear.
They're still there.
Oh, for the grab.
What I would like to do is spend about ten or fifteen minutes here, and go over the budget with you. Um, unfortunately, there's already been a few changes to that, what I'm going to be my, I don't think I'm sharing the correct screen.
Looks like the budget book.
Oh, did it? Okay, so I was.
Front page of the budget book.
Alright, I'll bring it back for you then.
Yep, there you go.
Okay, so there have been a few changes, and as I go through here, I will tell you what I would like to change it to. Um, financially, overall, what we're going to be talking about is not going to be affected. Uh, and then I'll open it up to questions and suggestions from the board after that. Uh, and then I will redistribute draft two to everybody, get draft two up on the website, get draft two in the clerk's office, accessible to the public. And then we'll take another look at it again in two weeks, with the intentions of the board approving next year's fiscal year budget. So I'm going to get to this budget transmittal message, what this message is, is it is essentially the budget in a verbal format. Um, for those of you that don't like looking at spreadsheets, which I hear that there are some people out there that don't like looking at spreadsheets, I've never met one.
Yeah, you're talking to one right now.
So what we're looking at here, the budget in brief, our general fund budget for the county, what we have budgeted for next year's thirteen, just under thirteen point two million dollars. And you'll see charts and stuff like that coming up that compare it to last year, but just for reference, last year, our general fund budget was thirteen point one million dollars. Each union had received a negotiated raise, so to increase our general fund by less than a hundred thousand dollars is, is, is a wonderful achievement in my mind. I was extremely pleased when I saw that number, when it all tied back together. Uh, now, the county budget also includes a lot of special revenue funds, debt service funds, you know, we, we have bonds through drains and bonds for the pension that we pay. So when we take all of the non-general fund expenditures that we're expecting, and, and added in with the general fund or total county budget that we are estimating for next year, is just a little bit over forty million dollars. So for reference, uh, last year, it was a little over thirty-eight million dollars. Now, ninety-nine percent of that increase is related to budgeted ARP COVID-related funds, because I had to budget, uh, that we are going to be spending some of those funds next year, so nearly all two million dollars of the increase we will see, uh, when we get to it, is related to the ARP. Um, challenges in creating this budget, this is going to be the first item that I'm going to change uh, when I issue draft two to you, uh, which hopefully will be available tomorrow or the day after. The first challenge here, it talks about the current state of emergency due to the outbreak of COVID. Um, as you know, there is no state of emergency, so I want to revamp how this is worded, to take the state of emergency out. Um, and then this, the second challenge, again, is, uh, this, this is a carryover from the previous budget years, the turbine tax litigation, um, which we're going to start learning more and more about as we, as we get closer to an end of that. Uh, a few things that have dropped off from being a challenge in previous years. Number one, uh, it was titled retirement expenses, where we were funding our OPEB trust fund. We're gonna, we're gonna talk about that a little bit more later, but at this, at this time, we, um, have, are, are expecting to have making our last deposit this month, in this fiscal year. And the last item that dropped off was the timing of the county's union negotiations made the budget presentation difficult. That was not an issue this year. I, I was confident enough in the information gathered to be able to budget for the expected union negotiation ratification. So that dropped off. General fund revenues. We are projecting almost fourteen point six million dollars coming into our general fund, under revenues in the upcoming fiscal year. For comparison, what we are expected in our current fiscal year, thirteen point two million dollars. So we're, we're thinking there's gonna, well, there will be approximately one point four million dollar increase in revenue coming into the general fund. This is just a breakdown, I, I don't know, I'll explain that in just a second. Uh, this is just a breakdown of what those revenue sources are. Uh, taxes estimated to be almost nine point three million dollars, for comparison, it was eight point two last year, so that's where the majority of that we're seeing, the additional wind turbines coming on the tax roll. Um, outside of that, uh, the other sources did not change, they, they bumped up a little bit, but not enough to get into discussion for explanation. I'll take a quick look at what our general fund expenses look like for the budget for next year. As previously, we looked at, it was approximately thirteen point two million dollars is what we're looking at, we're at the very bottom of page B. Scrolling on to page C. Um, our, our projected general fund surplus is just under one point four million dollars. Um, and that correlates almost exactly with what we're expecting the increase in revenue to be year over year. When we look at salaries, wages, and benefits, uh, within the general fund, they represent fifty-six percent of the general fund revenues. For comparison, our current fiscal year, uh, the budgeted amount for salaries was about sixty-two percent of general fund revenues. Fifty-six percent when comparing to other counties who are in a very good financial position. Fifty-six percent is what some of the best counties are at. Once we get over sixty, once we get over, once we get over sixty, it's, it's good to look at it. Once we get up to sixty-five percent, uh, salaries compared to our revenues, that's when it is difficult to operate as a, as a county, to get everybody the supplies and tools and everything that they need to provide good service to, uh, to the public. Um, so to see this at fifty-six percent, once again, this is the second time I'm going to say this, uh, I, I was very, very pleased to see when that number popped out. Here, I listed all the debts that, um, we're, we're, are, are on the hook for, for next year, making payments, our pension liability, uh, bond, the payment for that's going to be just north of eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars next year. Uh, the emergency operating center building debt payment, there's a bond for that, that we split with, uh, nine-one-one, we pay a third of it. Uh, next year's payment is fifty-six thousand, then we've also listed what the drain debt, um, payments will be for next year. And appropriations, these are the transfers to other funds, for example, the general fund will transfer monies to secondary road patrol to help fund that, in order to get a state grant, will transfer money to indigent defense in order to use it as match for state grant, childcare fund is a big one, and we'll get into those, we'll look at those individually coming up. Bottom of page C, items requiring continued monitoring, COVID-related costs, we just talked about another request for a COVID-related cost, making sure that it's eligible. Uh, making sure that there, when these costs are audited, that they don't find any of them, that uh, we would have to pay back to the federal, to the federal government. This is the second item in the draft two that's going to be removed. Um, this number two, uh, at the top of page D, state funding, state revenue sharings, last year, we were not we were not convinced that we were going to get our complete state revenue sharing because of uh, COVID-related decrease in taxable activities at the state level. Uh, we are confident of that coming up this next year, so this number two needs to be taken out, and that's what I intend to do uh, for your next draft. The childcare fund, this, the childcare fund is, um, always potentially a very expensive program to run, uh, simply because we pay for juveniles that are in detention. And reviewing bills month after month, you guys will typically pick out and ask me questions why we pay ten thousand dollars to this county's detention center, or this, or fifteen thousand dollars for a month, in, in a private detention center. So if we get multiple juveniles, uh, in detention, it, it can rack up the bills really quick. Um, so we monitor that pretty close, um, the court administrator and I, uh, discuss this more than on a quarterly basis, and if something is, is going out of whack, she's, she's always calling me and letting me know, even though we've never really gotten ourselves in trouble. The last item is the county landfill, this one continues to be a challenge, because communication between the state and the county, um, by the time our administrator is able to communicate with somebody, it seems like that person retires or takes another job, and then the whole process starts over again. Um, but it is my understanding that we are making some headway with, uh, a local representative, potentially, to help finally allow us to access a, a trust fund that was put away for Grashit County years and years and years ago. That concludes the budget in brief. The next item here is the resolution that will need to be passed. When you guys pass the budget, this resolution will be required to be uh, signed by the chairman. I, I didn't make any changes to this since I showed it to you, I believe I showed it to you approximately seven weeks ago. Um, I'm going to flip through that pretty quick. You know, the, the political stuff, I'm just going to flip through real quick, we got to get back to the numbers. Goals and objectives, one thing I wanted to ask you about goals and objectives, is several times you had brought up that one of You had brought up that one of the goals or objectives that you wanted to see on here was a, um. A salary review or something like that, but it, it never really got, I, I never. Got the feeling that you were one hundred percent wanted to added onto this goals and objectives. Um, can you give me some feedback right now if that is something that you would, that, uh, an, an issue you would like listed here?
The issue is if you would want to have as a goal. Uh, pursuing a classification study, uh, for Grashit County. Updating that which was done back in, I think it was nineteen ninety nine, actually wouldn't be updating it, it would be replacing it. And that's also, um, uh, Commissioner Murphy, I think you pointed out. Again tonight that you seem to be receiving a lot of these requests and, um, you are not always confident. What basis there might be to support them.
Obviously, it doesn't have to be on the goals and objectives in order for you to pursue it, but there had been previous. Mention of putting it on here, so I'll give you a couple of seconds, and if I don't, uh, if somebody doesn't suggest it to put it on here, I'll move on.
Would there be any objection to saying that we want to look at it?
Oh, I think we can say, uh, yeah, you don't need to say that you, uh, want to pursue it or pursuing it is just to consider it.
Consideration, that'd be good.
There has been this different discussions, discussion issues over this, but I think. Discussion and I, if, if, if indeed it was in, what, nineteen ninety nine, you said? That's over twenty years old. I mean, we've got to have something that brings us into the. We haven't discussed how we're going to do it. I think we've got to talk about it. So yes, in my opinion.
I will add it to draft two, and I will also just say. Um, a year where we have a budgeted one point four million dollar surplus is, is not a bad time to perhaps look at a project like this.
But you say that, but I'm still looking at that fifty six percent. As a board, we've got to look at that number too. So we got to, we don't want to get ourselves out of balance. And we don't know what the wind litigation is going to bring us. So there's a lot of questions here before it all happens.
Yeah.
We got, we got a lot of issues.
Absolutely. Um, so I will add that in there, consider, uh, a classification study. We have the capital improvement plan, which we went over in detail. Uh, I believe that was about five weeks ago. Um, just going to flip down through that. Oh, here's the virtual server expansion. That you guys just approved to move to this year. Um, it's close to the bottom in page K. In the twenty one, twenty two A R P column. Just so you can see how all that ties together. Departments, agencies and boards where members are appointed or receive funds and kind services from Grashit County. Uh, this hasn't changed. Our fee schedules, um, we had some minor updates. This is actually. Uh, number three of four changes that I've identified that I need to change. That's because the treasurer's department or the, the treasurer submitted a fee schedule. And I did not get it put in here, and I feel like if she went through the work of putting together a fee schedule, I need to put it in our book. So you'll see that in the next update. Elected official compensation, this was adjusted, uh, updated this year due to the, uh, work group. That Commissioner Smith was on and the board passed the recommendation. So these are the new salaries all put together in one spot that you can see. Few notes at the bottom that talk about, um, how the state of Michigan pays for like two thirds of judges' salaries. Um, new salary schedules, I'm going to skip past that. All right, T P O A M, I apologize for that. Um, T P O A M salary schedule. They have a pre hire in two thousand five schedule and a post hire in two thousand five schedule. G E L C s- salary schedule going into next year. I know it says effective ten, one, twenty. But that's when the, uh, negotiation, uh, the two-year negotiation took effect. So this is updated for next year. Apartment staffing in each department, comparing what was at the end of. Twenty one, which is the nine thirty twenty one fiscal year twenty two, starting October first, so. Then we get into the expenditures by department. Uh, this is one of the schedules that the board will be, um, approving. It is set up this way due to how the law requires us to present it to the board. The general fund, um, by department was presented to you three weeks ago. Uh, with the exception of two items. I did not have a number for our insurance. And I actually still do not have a number from our insurance company. Um, our policy is still at the underwriter and they've been unable to get that to me. So what I've done is I have, uh, put a budget number of one hundred and forty five thousand dollars in there. And the last item that we did not have was appropriations to other funds. Cause those are to the special revenue funds, which I did not have appropriated at the time. And unfortunately, I did find an error in the here that I need to change. It relates to. The county sheriff. Who was budgeted at one point six five million dollars and the county jail. Which is budgeted at one point four four million dollars. Um, in draft two, what you are going to see is the county sheriff is going to go down fifty five thousand dollars. And the county jail is going to go up fifty five thousand dollars. So throughout, uh, there's a net effect in the general fund. So that's how I'm still able to present what our expected surpluses are supposed to be and so on and so forth. But I just want you to know that that will be changed in draft two. I think our air conditioner went out, Tracy.
Well, it's cooling here. I think it's rain cooled from the roof.
Another, um. Item that I'm required to present to you is the funding sources for the Grashit County budget for the last three years. So these first two you've seen in previous budgets, and I'm going to skip down to the one that was created for this year. What you see here is every fund, uh, that we have here at Grashit County. What the expected budget is going to be, and then how we are going to pay for that. For example, the general fund, we have an expected budget of thirteen point two million. Nine point two million is going to be paid by taxes collected, two point six million is going to be. Generated by the department, two point three federal and state for a total revenue. Now you see that the total revenue is larger than the general or the expenditures, which means we'll have a surplus.
Excuse me, uh, Chris, what page do you want?
I'm on page five now.
Okay, got it.
So what, uh. This will tell you is if you see a number here under fund balance. That means we're going to be spending more money than we're going to bring in, in that particular fund for this year. So I want to show you how to look at this and determine if we have enough money to spend more. Than what we're going to bring in. For example, fund two, six, four, local corrections officers training fund, budget of twenty eight thousand dollars. We're only expected to bring in five thousand dollars. So we're going to use twenty three thousand dollars in our fund balance in order to fund the twenty eight thousand dollar budget. We scroll down to the next page, page six. This is our projection of fund balances. This is what tells you how much money is in each account. After we spend our money, a- after we bring in our revenues for the last couple of years. So I'm going to go to two, six, four. Local corrections officers training fund. I'm looking at the balance at the beginning of the fiscal year, we're going to have seventy five thousand dollars in the bank. So they can absorb, bring in it or spending twenty eight thousand dollars or, or twenty three thousand more than what they expect to bring in. Particular reason to increase expenditures in this fund is because several of the corrections officers. Um. That have twenty plus years of experience have, have retired in this past year. So they've been bringing in, uh, young, new corrections officers. And the sheriff would like to utilize this training fund for these young, uh, corrections officers. So that is how we read this. Now this is a lot of information in the funding sources. One of the things that I did for you is I attack, uh, attacked, attached. An expenditure comparison, and this is, uh, for each of these funds. So you don't see the ins and outs. You just see what the expenditures are. Last year and what the expenditures are going to be for the upcoming year. And when you look at this, when you scroll down through it, and, and this was in the board book packet, it's not a part of the budget book. I, I had a memo and then I had an expand comparison file. And when you look through the expand comparison file, the only ones that you see that have a significant increase are millage driven funds. And that is because. Our millage, our millage collections are going up significantly due to the turbines, the turbine farms being online. And the only other one that sticks out when you look at comparing what we're doing, our current year versus what we want to do next year. Is our A R P. Uh, because we did not. Budget A R P funds yet for our current, well, I'm showing you. Or we, we do still need to budget funds, but we're looking at nine hundred and sixty eight thousand so far spent this year. Versus budgeting one point eight million, um, for next year. But outside of that, i- it's just, uh, business as usual, maintaining the services that we have. Going forward, this is actually. This is the fifth budget that I presented to this board, and it is the first time. That we did not have some sort of major event that we needed to, to budget for that we didn't have. Uh, major movement and where salaries are, are being charged to from one department to another. Um, so looking at it from last year or this year and not seeing much of a change, um. Makes it, makes it a lot easier to review. Now each one of these funds. Has a backup spreadsheet. We talked about fund two, six, for local corrections officers training fund. So each of these funds are in numeric order. So if I go down here, I can scroll down to two, six, four. And it will tell me. Exactly what we're budgeting. Here's the five to thousand dollars we're expecting to get in. Going down to this detail, it tells us that the share, uh, sheriff booking fees helps pay for this. So every time someone is arrested and put into the jail, a portion of that booking fee is put into this fund to help, uh, train corrections officers. And so what we're looking at essentially is, um. I believe these distributions actually go to like, uh. Mid Michigan College when they get, um, additional training or degrees. So that in a nutshell is how the budget book works. Um, I'd like to flip over to my memo and cover a few more topics, but if anybody has any questions. Um, feel free to let me know right now. I'll give you a, a couple of seconds to say, hey, yes, I have a question. All right. So like I said, we are expecting a one point four million dollar surplus. Now, there are, um, different things that the board can consider, and this is one hundred percent the board's choice. This is not. Me saying we need to do this. This is me just giving you some ideas. Um, we could consider paying off the general fund loan from the delinquent tax fund. We have two more, uh, two hundred thousand dollar payments coming up. Uh, one of them, which is budgeted in the next, uh. I- in the draft of next year's budget. Um, we could consider putting a, a, away one more payment. Uh, to the O P E B account of, in the neighborhood of two hundred or three hundred thousand dollars. Um, or we could also just consider banking these funds until we, um, know what's going to happen with the turbine depreciation lawsuit. And I did put a note there that I do consider at this time that this is the best op- best use of funds, and there is no rush to do. Uh. Any of these at all. I mean, this can be made, this decision can be made at any time. Um, but while I, I did bring up the O P E B account. Um, I do have something that I do need some feedback from the board. Uh, we're going to. Um, begin utilizing the O P E B trust fund starting next year. We will not be charging back to any of the departments to pay for these post employment benefits. As we incur them, we're going to be using our account with MERS to pay for those. Uh, we do have one more payment that is exp- or that is budgeted to go into the O P E B account. Uh. Before the end of this fiscal year, so that means that would happen the next couple of weeks. Um. And I had a conversation with Commissioner Lemberman and, um, he supported me bringing this to the board. Would the board like to continue with, uh, making that deposit into the O P E B account? Or is that something that they may want to delay for a couple of months? Uh, to see how the, the economy shakes out and see how, um. Well, essentially investments will be looking, uh, i- in the short term. And, uh, Mr. Lemberman, if there's something that you could speak on just one second. Um, or we could table it to the next meeting, or we could just make the payment.
Well, what Chris and I talked about is, um. He said that last payment that's this year, which is three hundred sixty five thousand, I, I believe, Chris.
Three hundred.
Three hundred even?
Correct.
Um. It doesn't really matter when we do it other than our budget. So, for instance, if we thought the market is a little topy right now, and we wanted to get more bang for our buck. We could delay that three hundred thousand dollar payment, three months, six months. It would, it would change the, the, uh. Surplus for this year, change the surplus for next year, but it's still money that we're putting into O P E B at some point. And, uh, as we were talking, I just said, I think that there's a few good reasons why we should wait. You know, like, you know, maybe we'll see this thing come down. There, we don't know how COVID is going to work out. There's all kinds of weird things going on in China. And, uh, so that was our conversation, was that, you know, perhaps we should delay putting that last three hundred thousand into O P E B.
What's the, what's the, what's the downside of delaying?
That's, that was just it. I don't think there was any downside.
That's what I'm asking is, is there a downside to it?
The downside is he has to jigger the numbers because it makes.
They're getting paid to do that.
N- next year surplus, less than this year.
What do you think, Sam?
Yeah, I think we might just wait and see what the market's going to do. I think we're in a tough situation with a lot of things in the world. And, uh, if we get more bang for our buck, if it works, to hold on a little bit, we've got the money, so. It's not like we gotta scramble to get it.
Right.
I don't have a problem at all with it.
Okay, that sounds good.
We don't need a motion or anything to do that?
Well, uh you originally instructed me to do it, so I think you should probably officially instruct me not to do it.
Okay, I make a motion that we tell him not to do it or that we delay till next year.
You've got all the whole year to look at it.
Support.
Do we have a motion by Mr. Lemberman, support by Mr. Smith? Any discussion? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion passed.
Okay, so that will be another um update that you will see in draft two. So thank you for that. Thank you for taking that up right away. You know, uh a lot of the information that's in this memo we covered when we went over uh the budget. Uh an interesting tidbit, our pension bond payment, it has actually peaked next year. So that's the highest that we're going to have to pay on our pension bond payment, which is uh exhausted in twenty twenty six. And like I said, there's no extraordinary changes um from how we are operating today to how our budget is going to have us operating next year. It was uh makes it a lot easier for me to put together. Um we did a lot of work. Uh there's a lot of people that have done a lot of work to get things financially reported the way the where they're supposed to be reported to best benefit the county and to best benefit um you know, the the citizens.
Chris, if you if you would just go back to um that page where you show the three options and uh yeah, yeah, right there. Um you correct me if I'm wrong, but the the one point four million surplus that you're projecting for next year, you're looking at that as kind of a high watermark for the county, correct? That you, from from what we know today, you're kind of thinking that um we'll see surpluses decline and it it does whether the depreciation, that that lawsuit is a separate issue, we're still going to see those numbers decline.
Correct. We we are most likely near the peak. Um I know they're talking about adding two more turbine farms. So it's possible we could maintain this peak for a little while as those uh come online. But I do not um I I do not expect, we will not see these surpluses this high going forward because of what you said. We have turbine farms that are depreciating between, you know, five and eight percent a year. So um we we bring in nine point two million dollars in taxes and three point six is related to turbines. And that three points
I I'm sorry, I'm sorry uh uh for interrupting you. But so on that number three, where you said, consider banking these funds so they're available, should a negative result come from the lawsuit? And you you put on there, I consider this option the best use of funds. That that high watermark is another reason why you're you're feeling like we we should be careful um going forward. And that's one of the reasons why you you put that notation on there, correct?
Absolutely. Um when the when the lawsuit comes to an end, we're going to owe that right away, you know, these other things, number one and two.
We we may.
Thank you. We we will only owe that if we do not prevail or resolve this. And I I really would like that that to be understood. But there we do not know how that could re uh turn out. So having some money banked might be wise and some other entities are doing that. There's kind of a mix. Some are and some aren't.
I just want to point out.
I would strongly agree with that, that we need that uh there.
Question is going to be if you lose, how are they going to want their money and how fast they're going to want their money? So then all of a sudden, you're going to have to go out and bond or something to get we don't we don't bank it. So
You know, there's a lot of questions that aren't answered.
That's right. But I I just think the safest thing is to to you know, sock somewhere for
Or we have, or we are.
You know, they may give you some relief on paying them back. They may not, you know. There's there's going to be a lot of people in trouble. I mean, for the library, everybody's
Exactly. Every millage holder we got is going to be in trouble. Every RSD, every school, every township, it affects a lot.
And and all of them don't have their funds in the bank.
We'll be uh we'll be talking more about this uh later on in the agenda.
Right. I just think probably banking is a smart thing.
Okay, anything more, Chris?
No, I just want to clarify that there is a difference between owing something and paying something right away. And I don't want wasn't saying we'd have we'd have to pay it right away.
Because I don't mean to pay it.
Yeah. But if 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 it goes the other way, we won't know. We won't know, you know, how they want the money. Will they want it thirty days? Will they want it in a year?
Well,
If they end up going through the judgment, it was ordered in twenty eight days.
Yeah.
We'll see if we're in that position and then what instructions were given. That discussion really is. I mean, it's useful to prepare in a general way, general way for it, but quite a bit of that is premature.
That is my uh budget draft presentation for the board. Um now, my plan is to comb through it, correct some items, uh resubmit it to the board and uh we can go over the highlights again one more time in two weeks. Um and I'm guessing by then there will be some questions and I will also reach out to Commissioner Bunting and let her know that I am available to meet with her and go over um this board, this book with her.
Okay, just real quick, with Matt's money that we've moved to this year, will you just make an adjustment this year and then just make an adjustment for this year and next year moving over right now or?
I will um at the next meeting, I have to do budget amendments, you know, to fix everything in our current um budget. So I will be asking for an increase in capital improvement for that amount for his project. So yes, I will be
Then we'll reduce that out next year. Okay.
Yep.
Okay, I want to thank you, Chris, for all the hard work you've done on this budget.
I appreciate that.
And we need a motion to uh set a public hearing for the uh September seventeenth meeting of the budget.
That's a typo in the agenda. It's actually September twenty first.
Oh.
The resolution's correct, but the agenda is wrong.
Okay, so that should read September twenty third.
First.
First. And I saw move. Uh motion by Commissioner Bailey. We have a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lemberman. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay? Motion passed. And then now we're on to unfinished business. And I believe we have a resolution here. Who's going to handle this?
I I I'm not sure if you're on the um authority of commissioners.
Yes.
That's not a resolution. It's a policy. Um and at the board's request, I put together a draft policy to further your discussion about uh commissioners seeking professional services. Um that is a draft and I just turn the discussion over to you.
Well, I think we passed it at the last meeting. We wanted to go forward with this. I think we probably, this draft to me looks fine to have somebody legal look at it.
That so we're asking for a legal review on this?
Isn't that what you want to do, Tracy? Have somebody take a look at it?
If we pass it.
Yeah.
Right. Quite frankly, I I'll I'll tell you, I don't think it needs legal review because there's no law involved. It's simply uh your policy, but um I feel fairly confident that there are some of you that will want uh legal review uh for a variety of reasons. And so but I wasn't going to submit something for a legal review prior to your review in the language because if you decided you did not want to go forward with it after all, or if you wanted changes to the language, I didn't want to have to resubmit it for review. So if you are um approving the um draft policy subject to legal review and you are approving the concept, then I think it would be uh ready for legal review.
So I believe we're looking for a motion to turn this over for legal review?
I don't think so. I mean, if she feels confidence, it's just a policy for us. Basically, it states that we can't go out and spend counties' money on our individual people. We we can't do that. I I'd make a motion that we accept this draft without real legal review under uh the administrators uh preparing this with her legal knowledge. A second.
You have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this?
Um ask for roll call.
Yeah, I was going to request a vote though. Um one thing on there, I don't know how you can uh charge a commissioner for printing costs. One thing I know to stand, I would be concerned that this uh there could be an issue with minority rights on this, on this policy, but any other discussion?
Explain to me minority rights, Chuck.
Well, if someone, you know, uh I would be concerned that there could be a challenge to this, that it doesn't apply for uh a minority position on the on the uh board that isn't allowed to uh represent their constituents. That's just how I would look at it.
Minority. Is that somebody who doesn't agree with what what we're doing and then you want to go hire a lawyer to say this is not right? I mean, that's that's what's been done. And and I talked to a couple chairman of the board of a couple of counties and they don't have anything like this because they don't have any commissioners going to charge anything or any legal fees without a whole commission doing it.
Yeah. Any board that I ever worked was a a privy to. If you if any board member had a problem, they brought to the commissioners.
I did hear and we would decide, say, you know, I think
Talked about what we should do.
And and somebody ought to take a look at it.
And I
Chairman of the board.
That we have to do.
Yeah.
Tracy, under this uh, just as a a practical matter, let's say um I didn't like something Chris was doing accounting wise, so I went out and engaged a accountant to look at something. And then that bill comes into the county. What happens at that point? What what would happen, you know, because that would be a situation where the uh commissioners had not approved that ahead of time. So what what happens?
That depends a little bit on the situation, John. But I what I would uh uh think that I would do is I would present the bill to the commissioner, remind him or her of the policy. Um uh indicate that, you know, the policy indicates uh or requires that it has become a personal expense. I would notify the uh the vendor that uh this is a personal expense, one not approved by the board. Um I, you know, under this policy, there's nothing really that prevents uh you uh as the actor in this case to take it to the board and say, uh I did this, I felt I was justified and, you know, getting a majority of the board to go along with you. This is a policy. Uh so, you know, understanding that there are squiggles in every uh set of facts and every situation, that that's what I would anticipate. I could see myself doing. The way I would likely handle it.
So one way or another, that it will come to the board's attention.
Uh unless the uh unless the commissioner when approached said, oh, yeah, yeah, okay, I'll pay it. And then uh it gets paid and I receive confirmation that it got paid from the vendor. I would want that confirmation simply because I need to make sure bills don't go unpaid.
Right.
Any further discussion? Angie, you call the role, please.
Lemberman.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes.
Commissioner Bunting is absent. Commissioner Murphy.
No. Uh motion passed. Uh I believe we're up to oh, the uh discussion of a financial contribution to the Conservation District. Is there anyone online to talk about this?
Yes, you've got two folks online.
Okay.
Uh Kevin, um are you just on the phone, Kevin, or do do you have video? You're on mute right now.
So we go for uh star six, I think.
There you go. There you go.
Uh also, La Dean Anderson is should be on the phone too. She has worked on the budget that the commissioners requested more information about. And I'm hoping she can also unmute and be available for that.
Yeah, we'll we see her.
I'm I'm on. Okay. Okay.
All right. Um, do I have ability to share my screen?
Yeah. Is there any printed material available on this?
There is not. I was not aware that that needed to be turned in last week. I'm kind of new at this.
Do you do you do, are you familiar with the share screen function?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, you can do that and uh
Yeah. If you're ready, I will do that.
It's your show.
May I ask, may I ask what your affiliation with the with the
I I am I'm currently a board member, a fairly fairly new board member.
Okay.
Um I'm um as Kevin said, I'm I'm this is the Gresham County Conservation District. Um Kevin Craig is our chairman. I'm on the board. Um he's asked me to uh begin this presentation. So to begin with, uh I wanted to give you this information because there always seems to be some confusion. Um Understanding Conservation Districts is the title of this slide. Conservation districts are a governmental subdivision of the state. They were created by referendum to provide conservation assistance to local communities. Conservation districts are governed by a locally elected board of directors and we don't receive a stipend. Um Conservation districts are allowed to own and manage property. And uh we are also allowed to ask county commissions to place a millage on the ballot and or ask for operating funds on an annual basis. Conservation districts are not a nonprofit organization. We are not organized, authorized to level levy taxes. We are not authorized to use eminent domain. We are not regulatory. We cannot mandate conservation practices. And currently, the state does not give conservation districts any funding for operations. The role of a conservation district is this, to identify and prioritize local resource concerns, to develop long range and annual plans designed to meet prioritized needs, to address local priorities, to partner with local, state and federal agencies, conservation organizations and the community, and to provide private citizens access to technical and financial assistance. So let me introduce to you our primary partners. Working together, the Gresham Conservation District, Working together, the Grashit Conservation District. Uh, we work with M-DART, which is the Michigan Department of Agriculture and Rural Development, and the USDA Natural Resources Conservation Services. These, all three of us together bring services, programs, and money to our county landowners that help them to conserve what they own for the future. The USDA Natural Resources Conservation Service uh, provides farm bill programs. In our county, these comprise of the equip program, the CSP program, and, um, county landowners that participate in these two programs in the last two years have brought um, over a hundred and forty thousand dollars to address environmental concerns that cover over three thousand six hundred and twenty-three acres. Um, our other partner, the Michigan Department of Agriculture and Rural Development, or M-DART, is the state agency that is directed by law to coordinate and assist conservation districts with grant funding for meep in Grashit County. Now, you wanted to, um, see our budget because we are asking for some funds. Um, this is our year-to-date numbers. Uh, our budgeted for twenty twenty-one and our proposed twenty twenty-two numbers. As you can see, um, in, between our year-to-date and our budgeted twenty twenty-one numbers, we are, if you do the math, we're coming in at a deficit of income of over fifty-three thousand dollars. And this is because of layoffs, wages, um, that changed around. Um, but you can also see that operations were up um, in our expenses. Um. So what the bottom line is, is that, um, of that fifty-three thousand dollar deficit, we've whittled it down to twelve thousand dollars. Uh, thus, we are asking for the ten thousand, uh, for this, for right now. And then in the future, we would like to negotiate, um, another, um, number that is consistent that would help us with our operating fund. And I will leave that slide up and turn the time over to our chairman, Kevin Craig. And I guess any questions you might have?
Uh, you want questions? Uh, ju- just wondering why you haven't shown us two or three years back in the, in the budget? Would be helpful, I would think.
Okay. I was not aware that you wanted that far back. I apologize. I can get that to you.
Yeah. So if I'm gonna do one, yeah.
How many acres are in a county? How many acres is, um? Twelve, twelve miles times, you'd have to do the math, forty thousand per, yeah.
Too little.
Kevin, did you have any comment? Any addition to make?
That was an excellent presentation. No, I don't have any more comment. Um, uh, it's getting close to the end of our fiscal year and eh, yes, the, with the pandemic and with COVID and so forth, our sales of, of trees were down. Our seed sales were lower. The rental of our drill, uh, you know, things across the board were just lower and our projections didn't match up with our actual uh, that we had hoped to achieve.
Eh, your fiscal year, is that the same as the county October first to, uh, September thirteenth?
That's correct. It is.
That slide that, that you showed, um, the hundred forty thousand dollars that was spread over, I think, thirty-two hundred acres. How many farmers did that affect?
Do you know that, Kevin? I
I don't know. I don't have the number, no.
That's what exactly came from it.
It'd be in Grashit County, but.
Yeah, it's all in Grashit County, but I don't know the number of farmers.
How many, how many acres are in this county? Anybody got an idea?
The square mile is, uh, what, six forty? So you would multiply, uh, twelve by twelve by six forty, if you want the whole county. Of course, that includes the cities.
Like ninety-two thousand acres and if you took out some cities, I mean, there's sixty thousand acres, probably a farm ground, and we've only, we've only helped three thousand acres of people. And, and you don't, you're not sure how many people you have helped. I mean, some of these big guys farm three thousand acres.
Well, that was just in the last two years, and that number has gone down because of
But a hundred and forty was over two years.
Yeah.
You guys have any debt? I mean, you owe anybody any money?
No.
Oh, no, we have no debt.
When your administrator wrote us a letter, your former, I guess she's your former administrator. Eh, I, my question was, i- has she been paid for everything that she's done? I mean, you owe her anything?
Yes, we owe her some salary.
Any idea how much that is?
Um, that's included in this twelve thousand that we're short.
I just, I just think three thousand acres out of a hundred thousand acres.
Sorry, but I just don't see the value here.
Yeah, I mean, I think she gets, maybe put some counties together or something.
Yeah, they need, they need to get other help. I just don't see the value.
Do you have any grants pending that you're working on?
For the next fiscal year, yes. We have, uh, a, it's a fifteen thousand, uh, dollar a year grant for three years continual uh, from the inner, uh, the Water Resource Grant. And that, that's been approved. It's just, has to wait till the middle part of October before any funds would be available for us. And then we still have our meep grant, our staff member for the meep, and then our staff member for the, uh, farm bill biologist. Those are both granted, one from the DNR and one from M-DART.
And the part of the issue is, is in order to bring in funds in, to bring in grant monies, we need to have an administrator and we have no stable income for that salary. Thus, why we are asking, and, and conservation districts around the state, um, ask their county commissioners for this type of funding. Um, some counties do, some counties don't. We are constantly, um, going to the state legislature to lobby for money because they used to give us money for this. And they don't anymore.
You know why that is? Do you have a sense of why they don't, the state doesn't participate?
I don't, and it's, um, not every state, um, that has stopped. It's just Michigan is one of the ones that has. And it was, uh, a decade ago. Is that right, Kevin? How long ago did they stop?
Two thousand nine, uh, each conservation district received twenty thousand dollars for operating expenses uh, per year. And then beginning shortly after that, it, it was reduced, um, one or two thousand every year, and finally was zeroed out. I can't remember the year that, that ended, but it was probably two thousand twelve or thirteen. Yeah, but other states surrounding us, even Ohio, Indiana, Wisconsin, and Illinois uh, are very generous and it's, it's quite noticeable in the amount of, of farms and farmers, landowners that are able to participate and receive grants to, uh, it, to begin a conservation practice on their property. And this saves soil, it saves water, and so, so forth. And, uh, it, it's just something Michigan has not picked up on, apparently.
I guess I would suggest that, that you look at some other counties like our health department. You know, we, we, we can't afford a health department here. We share it with two other counties. Um, I just think that if you're looking at only three thousand acres in the county and seventy thousand dollars in a year, um, and you, and you had, you had a, uh, a director for a number of years since, since I've been on this commission. Um, and you're kind of going backwards. I don't know if you get another director, how you go forward.
That's a concern. Um, I wanted to point out that our farm bill biologist, we already do share. He works in three other, two other counties already. And, uh, if, if we have to close our office, uh, he'll probably move his office to one of those other counties. And we'll, yeah.
Has there ever been any talk about merging with these counties or doing this together with these counties? I mean, running the operation as a tri-county or a six-county operation or?
I don't think it's that simple.
Well, they do in the UP. Sometimes if six counties go into one conservation district.
Any, any, excuse me, any further questions for them? I believe they're asking for a motion, any motion.
At the last meeting, there was a motion made and a second, and it was tabled.
I think what the motion, it's coming back over to the next meeting, wasn't it?
Yeah. It's the next meeting.
Well, they'd like to have a motion, and I'm willing to make a motion. I am, I make a motion that we do not enter into any agreement with, for this fiscal year of the Seoul Conservation District.
Motion by Commissioner, uh, Bailey. Do we have a second?
I support.
Second by Commissioner Smith. Any further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, nay? Motion passed. So.
Oh, thank you for your time. Appreciate your, uh, attention.
Uh, you know, I'm hearing from the board that i- if you did consider going into other counties, maybe we're interested or something. I don't know.
Interested to talk about a lot of things, but when you bring a budget to this meeting, it's too late. They've been too late forever.
Alrighty, let's move on here. Um, all right, additional, uh, but, but before we go into closed session on the, uh, uh, union contract, uh, any additional public comment? Any, anyone you see online, Matt, that, uh, for public comment?
No.
All right. Um, I believe we need to, uh, a motion to, uh, move into closed session.
Not someone.
Motion by Commissioner Smith, second. The second by Commissioner Bailey. Uh, do we need a roll call on that, or? Okay.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes.
Commissioner Bunting is absent. Commissioner Lumberman.
Yes.
Yes. Motion passed.